Running down there for those pictures.
You know you're live.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, are we ready? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council Regular Session Meeting for Tuesday, July 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order, I'd like to ask the new incoming Jubilee Court to help lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to North Bend City Council Chambers. We're happy to have you here in person and for those of you who are also watching online or watching at a later point. I'm going to go ahead and start right now with a roll call of the members in the council chambers. So I'll ask who's acting as city recorder over there, our Public Works Director, if you want to help us with roll call.
I will. Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Gall.
Here.
Counselor Nordahl.
Here.
Counselor Gar Boden.
Here.
Mayor Engleke.
Here. All right. Thank you. We have one addition to the agenda. It was published earlier that we have an amendment where we're adding our, an item to the other business. We have two appointments to the Homeless Advisory Committee, so we'll be taking care of that under Other Businesses this evening. All right, so moving down the agenda, number three on the, um, the agenda tonight is we have some ceremonial business. I am very happy to announce that we will have our July Jubilee Ambassador Coronation this evening. So I would like to ask Sarah Wicks, who is also a former Jubilee Princess, to help us with that. And Sarah, you can help us walk through the coronation.
Right. Mayor, city councilors, and citizens. Our annual Jubilee, marking the 121st birthday of our city, will be July 12th through the 14th. Our theme this year is "A New Vision." There are many fun activities planned this weekend, and we hope, we invite you to participate in each and every one of them. And now it is time to crown the Court, who will reign over those three days of activities, as well as represent the city at a variety of events and programs during the upcoming year. We have with us this evening the members of past Courts. Our retired princesses are Princess Amy Springsteen, 2004 Court, Princess Jordan Wicks, 2016 Court, and Princess Ilabelle Isabella Jensen, 2019 Court. Mayor Engelke, please help us through the honors. All right. Addison Garrett, the daughter of Carrie Garrett and Paul Welch, and sister to Garrett. She is a junior who participates in golf and is a member and co-captain of the cheer team. After high school, she plans to attend a four-year university to become a prenatal ultrasound technician.
On behalf of all former July Jubilee Courts, we give you your official 2024 July Jubilee Ambassador's Court Sash. On behalf of the City of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Addison of the 2024 North Bend July Jubilee Court.
Juliana De La Torre, the daughter of Pablo De La Torre and Irma Isadero, and sister to William and David. She is a senior who participates in Oregon Battle of the Books. After graduating, she plans to go into nursing and later get her PhD. She aspires to travel to Japan, South Korea, and Mexico.
On behalf of all former July Jubilee Courts, we give you your official 2024 July Jubilee Ambassador Court Sash.
On behalf of the City of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Juliana De La Torre of the Nor, of the 2024 North Bend July Jubilee Court.
Addison Hansen, the daughter of Chris and Mandy Hansen, and sister to four siblings. She is a junior who participates year-round in cheer and is a captain. After high school, she plans to attend Oregon State University and pursue, pursue a degree in physical therapy.
On behalf of all former July Jubilee Courts, we give you your official 2024 July Jubilee Ambassador Court Sash.
On behalf of the City of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Addie Hansen of the 2024 North Bend July Jubilee Ambassador Court.
Sophia Ryan, the daughter of Jessica Engelke and Stephen Ryan, and sister to Emily. She is a senior who participates in swimming, track, and serves on the student council as a school representative. She is dual enrolled in SWAC and is on track to graduate with her associate's degree at the end of her senior year. After high school, she plans to attend Oregon State University to study communications and will be pledging to the sorority kappa kappa gamma.
On behalf of all former July Jubilee Courts, we give you your official 2024 July Jubilee Ambassador's Court Sash. On behalf of the City of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Sophia Engelke Ryan of the 2024 North Bend July Jubilee Court.
Clara Messner, the daughter of Clint and Cory Messner, and sister to Kaylee or Kayla Caris and Clinton. She is a senior who is a member and captain of a girls soccer team. She is a contestant in this year's upcoming Bulldog Pageant, a member of National Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, and the Bulldog Crew. She has had a 4.0 GPA for the past three years. After graduating, she plans to attend Oregon State University and major in marine engineering.
On behalf of all former July Jubilee Courts, we give you your official 2024 July Jubilee Ambassador Court Sash.
On behalf of the City of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Clara Messner of the 2024 North Bend July Jubilee Ambassador Court.
Now it is my pleasure to present to you the 2024 July Jubilee Ambassador Court. So I just want to take a moment and say thank you so much for everybody who has helped participate in creating this evening. We have our Special Events Committee and several of those members are in the room. If you could stand up for part of this Special Events Committee, thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. So we're here tonight and we have this Court to help us celebrate the 121st birthday of the City of North Bend. And so this is, it's a very emotional moment for me because it's taken us a while. We have been in hiatus since COVID. So maybe the, the emotions are four years coming and so we're very happy. Court, I would like to, you have not had a chance yet to meet the council, so if you want to introduce yourself to our councilors up here, you can come over and say hello. Follow me. Give them a moment to shake their hands and then I think we might have a question or do something. So before I know, we're going to take a couple ceremonial photos. There was another person that I want to highlight in the room. We have Pat Choak Pierce, who was the original person who got the July Jubilee program going back over about 50 years ago in 1983. And so we want to say thank you, Pat, for being a, just a true North Benner and to all the work and the volunteerism that you have done over the years. So let's give Pat a round of applause. Court, we'll just take a moment and go down the line here. We can actually start down there with Addie. Is there anything specific that you want to say what it means to you to be part of the July Jubilee program or anything that you would like to share?
Fun fact.
Fun fact, let's give her a fun fact. Something so we know a little bit about the Court and who's representing our youth here in North Bend. I know you're involved in several activities. Remind me the sports that you're in.
Um, I'm a cheerleader and I do golf.
That's right, perfect, great. Well, welcome to, to volunteering in North Bend. Okay. And we'll just go ahead and continue on the down the line, Juliana.
A fun fact is I volunteer at the Bay Area Hospital.
Volunteer at the Bay Area Hospital, all right, thank you and welcome.
Um, fun fact about me is that, um, last year, the Chersington One Nationals, my age was a captain of that.
Um, I'm excited to be involved in this community more and I have a fun fact about myself. I was born in Europe, so that's pretty much why I'm doing that.
All right, Clara.
I'm very excited to be a part of this amazing July Jubilee and to be a part of the community and to get my service to the community. And a fun fact about me be that I enjoy continuing fishing.
Go ahead and get a nice photo of you up here and then I'll ask the council to join us if you guys want to kind of come over here. We've got our city administrator, who also is a dual sometimes photographer, or we've got the first husband of North Bend there with his camera.
Come way back there, come on up. I don't know how much of a zoom you have. Oh, too much, too much tell, look at him. Look at that funny man over there, he's funny.
That's right.
Did you need, I thought like only heard three clips, okay.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's quicker than I am.
Do you want the bouquets all going one way?
Yeah, I like the bouquets one way, doing your picture pose, remember how it's practiced.
Sophia and Clara picture poses in the other hand. There you go, there we go, there we go.
All right, here we go. All right, smile.
We'll ask the council to join the ambassadors and then if I could get all four princesses, the Pat Choak Pierce will take a photo with us around her chair, we can do that. Okay, so council, would you like to come in for a photo? I think we should put their right in the middle.
All right, this is where your wide lens kind of. All right, let's see here. All right, ready? Look at me.
I got one quick comment. There's two of these gals on cheer team, so they probably know my son Cory a lot better than they know us here, so. I got to throw Cory's name out there.
Yeah, I love it, I love it, okay.
Oh, no, you're good. I was just getting those normal, natural, you know. I know, I'm impressed.
So all the former princesses and then if you want to join us, we've got Pat Choak Pierce here, she says she'd be happy to take a photo, maybe we can kind of go around you. I think if yours did here, this is fine, we're going to maybe see the photo later. And Court, if you want to join us over here?
So that means unfortunately we're on track a little bit, so if you don't mind. That would be wonderful, that's a great suggestion, thank you. You want to sit next to me? Will you come sit next to me and have a conversation?
All right.
So from a, from a big line right here, um, I don't see a pattern here. All right, so everyone look at me, ignore that guy up there. He's like two children like it. I'm going to take a couple more. The blank, in fact, the fire chief and Pat Gall is going to be a very famous photographer behind you. All right, I appreciate that. I know it should have been a larger one because the blank, it makes you look, it's all pretty simple photo, so we don't publish one with a blank. I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay. All right. Okay, you can have your.
All right. Now, anyone that wants to leave, it's always a good time if you want to.
So we're going to continue our counseling, although we know that wastewater treatment is always those kinds of things. Well, if you stay, you want to sit just for a minute before you can visit your friend in the hallway. All right, for the record, we are losing Council Nordahl. She is, has an excused part of the meeting. And so we're going to go. So that is, takes us to number four on the agenda. I had a first to approve the consent calendar as presented and I had a, it was a first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Hamilton. All in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Number five on the agenda is public comments. I believe we have no public comment evening, this evening. As a reminder, you're always welcome to participate in public comments and there's information on our website on how to do so. Number six on the agenda is the adoption of the North Bend Public Library Meeting Facility Policy. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that the city council approved the North Bend Public Library Meeting Facilities policy as presented.
Okay, I had a first from Counselor Hamilton and a second from Counselor Gar Boden. All in favor of the adoption of the North Bend Public Library Meeting Facilities, um, policy, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Number seven is the authorization of the purchase of the trench compactor for CAT 420 backhoe. Is there a motion from the council?
I move the city council authorized the purchase of the new vibratory plate compactor for here some equipment for 11,243,73.
Okay, first, first from Counselor Gall, second from Counselor Gar Boden, any discussion? All in favor of the authorization to purchase trench compactor to CAT 420 backhoe, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Number eight is the request of approval for the partner paving intersection of Tower and Brussels. Is there a motion from the council?
I move the city council to operate a night for materials to repair 1,400 square foot section of Tower Street and Conduction of the water for $8,000.
I'll second.
Okay. I heard a first from Counselor Gar Boden and a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor then of the authorization of the purchase of the trench compactor, please say aye.
Aye. This is the favorite.
Right. Yeah. Please, any opposed, motion carries. Okay. There was no executive session, so that would be nothing for number nine. Number 10 takes us to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple updates. It is published on our website, also linked to Facebook and our Nextdoor and other social media sites. I want to update the council that our new fire engine is back in service after its second downtime. Engine is under warranty, so all repairs are made. The folks were on site yesterday and did a thorough analysis, but it is back in service, so that's all good. Also, I'll point out that firefighter Brendan Givens and his wife are the proud new family to McKenna and Givens, July 3rd baby. So the mill shot off a bunch of fireworks to welcome the seven-pound little baby sister to Brooklyn, so we just want to bring another provincial firefighter into the family here. So she's doing well with family. The California boat ramp, our Parks and Facilities Manager was on the six o'clock news tonight telling everyone that he's pretty dang sure that next week the ramps will, well, that's not exactly what he said, but that's what he really meant to say. But all indications are that the docks are ahead of schedule and should be back in the water next week as planned. So kudos to the Park staff and everyone involved, including the council, for helping assist that and certainly appreciative of the $30,000 grant we got from the state to help pay the bill. Speaking of grants, we have a contract that we've now executed with the Oregon Department of Energy. You may recall, I believe it was last year, maybe the end of last year, you approved a contract for about $150,000 for new streetlight LED conversion in the city. We're happy to say that we received a $100,000 grant to offset that cost and we are seeking some additional energy trust incentives to further lower that cost. And so that is good news. With that said, I'll hand it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any committee reports? Paul, did you have anything? You're a, Counselor Hamilton and I do not have any more special event committees meetings right now. And the next up, we'll be doing a evaluation of how this year's July Jubilee went after this weekend, so we'll probably get that on the books soon. And that would be it for committee reports. Council comments, Counselor Gall, we're going to start with you.
Well, I, I don't know if it was just perfect timing or what, but I've got a harbor safety meeting this next week and I was supposed to give a presentation on how the California street boat ramp was coming and, and so thank you for all your effort there. It's, it's going to be a big plus to get that back in the water. For one thing, for safety for our facilities when we are working on deck on a log ship, we have to have a safety boat in the water and it's pretty handy to have California street boat ramp right next door to us, so. And then thank you two for all the stuff for July Jubilee. I know you guys had lots of meetings and, and thank God I wasn't on that committee, so. Anyway, thank you though. And everybody come and, and I'm not going to say everybody, but I'll buy some people a beer thereafter the stroll.
All right. I love it, okay, Counselor Gar Boden.
Yeah, after many meetings and many learned, learned experiences from this, the Special Events Committee, it's nice to see that when we talked about it, about if we don't do something now, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to put this on. It seems like all the loose ends are tied up between Stephanie and Melissa and the committee, so it's just awesome to see it finally come to, we're going to be here doing it this weekend, so. And the girls, I'm glad to see them go through their coronation as we interviewed them and they're a pretty amazing group of girls there. And thanks for the boat ramp thing going in because that was, a lot of people talk to me about it, so the urgency that the city completed that or. to me about it, so the urgency that the city completed that or gonna be completed is just awesome, so thank you guys.
Great. Well, happy birthday to North Bend, and I know that it's, North Bend isn't the only person having a birthday right now, this weekend. So he's not 121, but the Counselor Gar Boden will be having some cake this weekend too to celebrate. So I just had to throw that out there, so I didn't forget you.
You didn't have to buy it.
And you didn't have to buy the cake. Also, just want to say thank you to all the departments who are participating in some way of the July Jubilee, really cool stuff, all week long that is happening at the library too. So when I say that this weekend is something for all ages, it's really, really neat. Also, the mall has been a business that really stepped up, and they've got Jump for Fun, free face painting, free monster truck rides, take your, take a stab at like, street vaulting if you want to. So I guess this is just kind of our last call as far as like, check it out on the Facebook page or the city website, and you're gonna find a list of all the activities. So congratulations to the new ambassador court, and hoping that we can get these kids involved in a different way than they have been before, and really be a voice of our youth in our community. So I'm really proud of them, and just hats off for Pat Chope Pierce, we're coming out tonight and, and supporting us in North Bend's birthday. So that is all that I have for counselor, or for council comments. And so I'll go ahead and move to number 13, which is other business. And Mr. City Administrator, we had two applicants for our Homeless Advisory Committee, and I viewed those applicants, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint those applicants. Do I have those applicants in front of me? I do?
Yes.
Okay. Am I the only person that has those applicants in front of me?
Everyone should, you should have an amended agenda with the two pages.
Okay.
It's the highlighted one, Madam Mayor, to be highlighted and yellow.
Okay. Give me one moment to locate those. Yep, I see them, thank you. All right, so the two applicants that I have are. Do you see the names here? So, and I would need a motion from the council to make that appointment, or?
Yes.
So I have one applicant named Terry Franzen, and the other applicant is Sue Matthews. So I'm looking for a motion from the council to appoint Sue Matthews and Terry Franzen to the Homeless Advisory Committee. Is there a?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sue Matthews and Frances Brandon.
Terry Franzen. Terry Franzen. Terry Franzen. Are you messing with me?
Still the oldest advisory board.
Yeah, shit, thank you. I have a first from Counselor. Hamilton, I have a second from Counselor Gar Boden. A first from Counselor Hamilton, a second from Counselor Gar Boden, all in favor of appointing.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Friends.
Needed that like 60 seconds ago. I had a first and a second, any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of appointing Terry Franzen and Sue Matthews to the Homeless Advisory Committee, please say aye. Motion carries. Okay. So that was our other business, and there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.
7:30.
That was not our work.